Good evening, everybody, and welcome to our general session. I'll open it at 7:07. Would you all rise for the pledge allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We again want to welcome you to our general session. I have just a few comments. The first one being, we had a town hall meeting a couple of weeks ago, and we had about 25 people in attendance. So, I know we're looking to have another one for sure. By first of the year, we may have one sooner. And so, just keep me posted on that. It was a good discussion. And also, in the packet tonight, and certainly online, and you all will be receiving it this week, probably later this week, is the letter regarding the ambulance fee from me in regards to the council's decision to raise that fee to $25 to help fund our ambulance. And so, the letter explains quite a bit. I would invite any of you, if you have any questions, feel free to contact me, phone or email our city manager, Forrest Norberg, or finance director, Michelle Ailing. And definitely encourage you to do that. And I just want to say, be kind to our utility window workers. They did not make the decision. We did. And so, I often hear reports of very unkind activity through the drive-up windows. So, I know you're frustrated. If you are, I would invite you to reach out to us, and we'd love to hear your comments. I do want to give a shout-out to our public works. They just did a phenomenal job getting our city ready for Coquille River Days. Our city just looks beautiful. It still looks beautiful. And they're just working hard. And so, I want to give a shout-out to our public works and to Mark and your team. And I also want to give a shout-out to you, Mark, in regards to our Hundred Acre Wood and Riverwalk. I continue to get comment after comment after comment about our parks, and especially our Riverwalk and Hundred Acre Wood. And it was fun to be up there and have, I think there's probably about 30 teams from Gold Beach as part of a bike club who came specifically to ride our Hundred Acre Wood. And they loved it. And so, appreciate you, Mark, and your team. The last comment I want to make is in regard to Agenda I-11, City Attorney, I'm sorry, City Manager Contract. I noticed it was on social media today that people were concerned we were giving Mr. Norberg a $30,000 increase in his salary. That's just not true. On that agenda, it says that his contract expired, which was a three-year contract. Attached to that document was a strike-through document, something we're used to looking at, which strikes through the old information and puts in the new information. So, that was at least two years of increases included in that. And so, you all need to know, in a previous meeting, budget meeting and city council meeting, Mr. Norberg volunteered to not take an increase. Also, it was not budgeted for him to have an increase, and that is still the case. And so, I just want to make that public comment, and I appreciate all the hard work Mr. Norberg's doing. And during this challenging season. But, I wanted to clarify that, because I know there was some misinformation out there on social media land. All right, I'm going to now turn over to Councilor Corbus.
I have no comments.
All right, Councilor Marshall.
Hopefully, everybody had a happy Fourth of July, and everybody stayed safe, had fun. Good to see everybody out here, like I like to pop off every once in a while. There's a lot of things that go on in our city each and every day. There's decisions being made. There's stuff that goes on that council's directly involved in, stuff that we don't know anything about. But, the people of this city have every bit of a right to come down and get all that information. And I encourage people to continue to get involved, continue calling my phone, maybe not as much as they've been lately, but continue. We do want to hear about it. It's not falling on deaf ears. There are processes that we do have to go through. And with that said, love to see everybody here tonight. A shout-out to our parks people, our parks committee members. Is there any of them in here right now? Let's give them a round of applause real quick. As well as Devon Brown Construction, our director, Mark Danning. These people have worked tirelessly, and if no one's been down to Sturdivant Park, there's a lot going on down there. And with the effort of all these great people, Knife River Construction donated us a lot of the blocks, the eco-blocks down there, to do all that stuff right about their cost. So, with a lot of help from our local companies and stuff, so just a shout-out to those guys. And I'm thinking, hopefully, that's going to be done by the steak feed, maybe, and kids can go down there and enjoy that park. And there's something for, as far as handicap kids and different kids with different disabilities. So, it's going to be a huge highlight and a promise that we made when we tore that structure down a few years back that people weren't exactly happy about. But, anyway, that's all coming in. So, there are good things happening in our cities. Stay involved and keep yourself informed. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Marshall. Councilor Westrom.
Okay. You mentioned Sturdivant Park. There's a dog show going on down there this week?
Holy smokes, that's an awesome thing, too.
And in a couple of weeks, there's going to be the Fireman Steak Feed. And I unfortunately cannot make it there this year. There's a wedding that's happening that same day that I have to be part of. So, I would like to just make a little donation to the Coquille Volunteer Fire Department Association. Zach, if you'd come up, this is just a contribution to help offset the rest of the cost for the steaks.
Awesome.
Great.
And I do believe our volunteers, we're looking for volunteers. So, if you're interested in helping out with that awesome, wonderful event, again, just to remind you, that event is held for the Volunteer Firefighters Association, which they use that money to buy the different things where there may be a shortfall in the city's budget that they need or things that they want. So, make sure if you need some, if you've got time, go down and volunteer. I'm gonna. I'm going to be there. If you've got the time, a little bit, if you can spare an hour. I know my wife's looking at me like I am. Yes, we are. Get down there and support that. And the dog show, if you haven't been to this dog show, it is amazing. There are world-class trainers. There are world-class animals down there, ones you can see on the TV. So, get down there and support that effort, because it brings a lot of business and people to our beautiful little town. Sorry. Coffee.
Thank you, Councilor Marshall again. Councilor Westrom's done with his comments. So, we're going to go to Councilor Waddington.
Congrats to Shop With Heroes. I saw today a $5,000 donation from Walmart. So, that's totally awesome. Appreciate you guys continuing to grow that program. I'd also like to thank Innen Fire Chief Zach Latimer and Dave Sclary. Thank you for stepping up, continuing to lead the fire department and ambulance, and serving all of our Coquille community. So, hats off to you. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Waddington. Councilor Cooper just got married. So, I'm thinking he's away this evening. And I also want to add to our Coquille Fire and Rescue and our Coquille PD for Coquille River Days, but especially Fire and Rescue, getting the old engine out. It's been a few years. And I appreciate the strong showing and the PD for all their help. All right, we're going to now move to consent calendar, item number five.
I make the motion that we accept the consent calendar as presented by staff.
Motion by Councilor- Motion by Councilor Marshall, seconded by Waddington, to accept the consent calendar as written. Any other discussion? Holes in favor?
Aye.
There we go. Thank you, councilors. We're now going to go to staff reports. First up is City Manager, Mr. Norberg.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, councilors. Only one correction to my report. You have it. If you have any questions about it. But, I have the Lot 10 RFP on there, and that's not quite ready for prime time yet. So, we'll have that discussion at the next council meeting.
Any questions for Forrest? Okay, it doesn't look available any questions. And just remind everybody here, if it's your first time, and for everybody online, if you don't see us asking questions, because we've previewed the report, and we'll move on to the next one. Our reports are available, cityofcoquille.org. And next up is our Finance Director, Michelle Ailing.
Only thing I want to add, I've had a couple of people reach out and ask about a donation specific for the ambulance utility, you know, the ambulance fee that we have going on the bills. So, we're going to present the council with an updated budget next month, and it'll have a donation line specific for those people that want to do that. And I think it's awesome. Thank you, guys, so much.
So, last meeting, we had a couple of people volunteer to donate who live outside of city limits, who have benefited from our Coquille ambulance and the service they provide. If people want to do that, how do they do that? How do they make a donation?
So, what we'll do is we'll set up a revenue line specific for that and an expense line specific for that. And then, when they bring in donations or they send them in, they can just put ambulance donation or, you know, monthly donation, something along that line to let us know where to put it. And then, what we'll do is we'll tag it to that specific line item in the budget.
Okay, so the main thing is make sure it's noted ambulance, so that it goes specifically to that. And just to confirm for everybody here, that ambulance fee that'll show up on your, it already shows up on your water bill. It was either $1, depending on your situation. But, that all goes to designated funds specifically and only for ambulance. Same. Thank you. Any other questions for Director Ailing?
I was just following up. Michelle, I know you're short-staffed in your stuff. But, how are we going with, are we able to keep up with our bank reconciliation to make sure we know how much cash we have and coming in, and that's?
Yeah, so, I met with Springbrook on July 2nd. Yeah, trying to think of what date it is. July 2nd last week, and we were able to clean up the rest of it and get May balanced out. And then, I will be doing June here in this next week and a half, and meeting again with Springbrook at the beginning of next week or week after. I can't remember the dates off the top of my head. But, we'll have June cleaned up by then, and then we'll start July. And so, we're right on target with where we're predicted to be, and we'll have that answer every single month now.
Awesome. And the collection process, or have you had a chance to move forward on that yet? Or?
Not yet. I'm going to talk to our attorney and city manager and see if we can move that ahead. We've been postponing it due to personnel issues.
Audits, where are we at on that? Do we have any new views on that?
Right now, I got a list back from the auditor last week of all the outstanding items. And I will be working with Laura and training with her on getting those figured out, things like inventory and big-ticket items, assets.
Awesome. Thank you.
Yeah.
And in your report, I just want to add, because I know we've been asking, is there anything we can do to expedite our auditing processes to catch us up? And in your report, you mentioned there are a couple of companies. So, it looks like we might go out for a proposal. And your report states, "We have the potential to get completely caught up by the end of 2026", which would just be amazing. And I applaud any effort to get us there ASAP. Thank you.
Do you have any other information on that, that you can elaborate a little more for the people that are listening as far as, because that's a big topic for people in understanding how we got to where we're at and how hard we're trying to work to get it cleared up. So, could you elaborate on what Mayor just-
Sure. You know, it hasn't been a secret, but over the past several years, we've been consistently behind on audits. And that has been from previous administrations. And I don't know the specifics of why it happened. We just know it happened. At this point now, we are still three years behind, and we're consistently three years behind. And so, what we've done, we had a company reach out to us, which was actually kind of neat. They specialize in bringing cities up-to-date on audits. So, Forrest and I, we had a chat with the gentleman that reached out to us, and, you know, we talked about that, and we said, "Is this possible? Is it like, is that a dream or is that possible? Can we get caught up by the end of 2026?" And they said, "No, that's definitely very possible." We had a second company, reached out to them based on a referral from the H&amp;W CPAs up in North Bend. And so, that other company as well has said that that is not an unobtainable goal. So, what we'll do, since we've got two companies, you know, hopefully, we'll get more. But, we'll put out a request for approval. We'll ask them for the scope of work, getting those three audits done next year, January to December. And that will get us on track with actually having the fiscal '25 year, or '26 year. Yeah. Fiscal '26 year done on, you know, December 26th, which will be on target and with the state deadlines and everything else. And so, we'll be on time, which will be nice.
Awesome. And we don't, as far as, unless it's something that's totally out of the ordinary, it looks like what you guys have pilled through so far, we're not going to have any more surprises like we acquired.
We should not have any more surprises.
That's good.
Yes.
Good. Thank you.
Yes. I don't know that I could take any more surprises.
I don't have a question, but I want to at least acknowledge, in your report, you often talk about new hires. But, in particular, paramedic firefighter Brian Conley, retiring after 25-plus years of service. So, I just want to thank him. He's not here. There probably is something planned for him, but I just want to thank- All right, we're going to move on to our Innen Fire Chief.
The thing I want to add is we are currently looking for volunteers. So, we're running low on volunteers. We're always looking for new ones, always accepting applications for new volunteers. If that's something that you get, or somebody wants to do, come down, talk to myself, talk to anybody at the fire station. We're glad to give you an application. We're desperately looking for some guys.
So, in case the microphone wasn't on for people listening online, fire department's looking for volunteers. The process, if you'd like to volunteer, it's an application process. Stop by the fire station, talk to Zach, talk to the staff, pick up an application. And it's a great way to be involved in our city.
Is it better than being a councilperson?
Come try it out.
You've got time, don't you?
I've already dedicated 25 years of my life to being a volunteer.
Anybody else have questions?
See.
Thanks, Zach. Thanks, Zach.
Yep, thank you, guys. Appreciate all you guys and gals.
All right, Planning Department, Haley Sheldon.
Hello. I don't have anything to add to my report, but let me know if you have any questions.
Around our housing development, is that, as far as you know, is all that going as planned? Any hiccups, any-
The person's school?
Yep.
It is going as planned, as far as I know. Yes. I expect that they will, well, so right now, they're doing their evaluation of the soils, and we expect that they will start construction on their utilities sometime this summer. Forrest, do you have anything else you want to add on that? You're, okay.
Awesome. And then, the other thing, we, I was approached by the owner of the Denny's Pizza here a while back. He had a letter that was from, I think, the planning department, and they were talking about wanting him to not offload his stock product, his inventory, and that they wanted him to go around to the street that the pharmacy's on and offload there.
That letter did not come to my department, and I'm not aware of a letter such as that.
Gotcha.
That's a change in parking status on First Street in particular. I think Denny's gets all their things offloaded on Adams, I believe. So, it doesn't, that is only related to the no parking loading zone area on First Street.
So, the letter, as you might recall, we talked to them about that current loading zone that we have on First Street, in that first block there. Basically, the trucks keep damaging the neighboring building. Now, that awning kind of sticks out a little ways more than some others. And they've seen a lot of damage from trucks over particularly over the last couple of years. So, we had talked to the council about, and we will see this, we'll come in front of council, about moving that loading zone. But, I don't really think that's going to affect Denny's. Yeah, they load on Adams.
And he was, his concern was that he was thinking that they wanted him to not do that and then come around, and he's like, "The truck can't even-"
Right, no, no.
"-check into it and see if it's-"
No, we're really not concerned about Adams. A number of businesses there get offloaded from Adams. And usually, it's early in the day. It doesn't really create any issues.
Yeah.
So, yeah, we're not saying they can't do what they're doing currently.
Gotcha. Thank you for the clarification.
Sure.
We'll hear more from Haley later for hearing. Okay. Moving on to Director Denny, Public Works.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. The only thing to add to my report, you guys already talked about, which was the dog show down at Sturdivant. You covered it. But, just to give a little more detail, they're doing their regular, I think this is their fourth year they've been down there. They really enjoy it. We like having them. And I think they go Thursday to Sunday. And I did find that program online, and we'll be sharing this through the city webpage and social media. But, it looks like most of the action happens between 8:00 AM and noon. There's a little bit in the afternoon. But, if you really want to see them show their dogs, get down there in the morning. I enjoy, I get down there as much as I can when they're out here. I really enjoy it. And, you know, the downside is they do take up all the camping. So, it's basically closed. But, the great thing is, you know, the event's open to the public. And it's, you know, they encourage the public to come out and watch. There's plenty of parking in the main lot. Just please don't drive past the main lot, or you'll be going right through their event. But, come down and check it out. Other than that, I'm happy to answer your questions.
I just want to highlight and thank Advance Health for their donation again this year. It provides free swimming lessons and free family swim days through the summer. So, I appreciate that. Acknowledge it. Okay, yeah, let's hear about that. I meant to ask about that, because it was on- Yeah, because it was on Haley's report, and I meant to ask it, too.
Okay, we put on, you know, we put in an application for a grant through the arts program, the-
Old Roads Transportation Safety, maybe?
Yep, I think that's it. We did not get awarded that grant, and what we put in for was a sidewalk right out here from 10th Street on this side of the road, down to about 7th, where the sidewalk ends. There's no 7th here, but that's about where the sidewalk ends. Did not score well enough through that program to get the grant, but they encouraged us to apply through Safe Routes to Schools. So, when they ask you to apply for one of their grants, it's usually a pretty good indicator. You got good backing in there, and they want you to get it. So, we'll be following up on that. I think in the winter, that grant period opens up and closes sometime in the spring. So, it'll be next year before we even find out about it. But, still, it could be good. Add a much-needed sidewalk in here. If you see the high school kids, we'll watch them walk around cars out in the road out here. Yeah, so.
Great, thank you. Any other questions? All right, Coquille Library, Director Lucas.
Good evening. I have nothing to add to my report, but I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
I always like to highlight gifts and hard work, your planner boxes. So, I want to thank Coquille Garden Club. It's in your report. First Community Credit Union and the homeschool program. The flower boxes looks beautiful. So, thank you to all those people. I love your programming. Thank you. Keep up the hard work. All right, we're going to move on now to Chief Doyle for Coquille Police.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Nothing to add to my report, however. I'd be happy to answer any of the questions that the council might have.
Doesn't look like they have any. Thank you to your men and women. In our packet, I think it's been a while, or certainly the first time we have a report from Liz Kenny, our city recorder. If you have 20 questions, we should ask them right now of Liz. But, she wrote a great report for everybody. If you don't see it, recent. Any questions, councilors, for Liz?
We'll let you off easy this time.
Now, you're all wondering what she wrote. Cityofcoquille.org, council packets. Thanks, Liz. Thanks for all your hard work. All right, at this time, I think that's all we have in our packet. So, at this time, we're going to move to public participation. If you're here and meant to speak during public participation, you would have wanted to sign up. It's three minutes of speaking. It's your time to address the mayor and the council. And I can fairly promise, we usually follow up with every public comment if it's needed. And so, we don't have anybody signed up right now. And so, we're going to move on to item number eight. And at this time, I would like to recess our general session at 7:36. We are now going to open into a public hearing in regards to our CDB grant funding. And I'm now going to turn it over to Haley. I believe we have to read for the record the notice of public hearing. So, please go ahead.
Okay, so I'm just going to give a little brief overview of what this is all about. And then, I do think that we have to just open it for public comment. If someone has any questions about this particular item, then do the reading.
Okay.
Is that right? Because it has, we have to open the public hearing on the CDB.
Well, I think we should open a hearing and then read this lovely message.
Perfect. So, and the public notice does really explain it. So, if you want to just start, well, this is a, so we have applied for, excuse me, we've applied for a community development block grant to do some improvements to our water system. As part of that, there are a lot of federal requirements about how we have to, our environmental review and all sorts of different items. One of them is having this hearing tonight and reading this document that the mayor is going to read. The document really does explain a lot about the grant, so let's just listen to that. And then, if you have any questions, right, is that-
All right, I get to read this lovely letter, which is fine. And then, we will open it up, and it will remain open for public comment. Is that correct? Are we good? Okay. Public Notice of Public Hearing. The city of Coquille is eligible to apply for a 2025 Community Development Block Grant from the Business Oregon. Community Development Block Grant Funds come from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. The grants can be used for public facilities and housing improvements, primarily for persons with low and moderate incomes. Approximately $11 million will be awarded to Oregon non-metropolitan cities and counties in 2025. The maximum grant that a city or county can receive is 2.5 million. The city is prepared, is preparing an application for a 2025 Community Development Block Grant from the Business Oregon to fund improvements to our water system. Replacement of a main line carrying water from the river to the treatment plant and improvements to the water plant and the order, ordering?
Ordering.
Ordering. Water tank. The proposed project will benefit people served by our water system, estimated to be at least 3,726 persons, of whom an estimated 56.64% are lower moderate income. A public hearing will be held by the city council at 7:00 PM on Monday, July 7th, at Coquille City Hall. The purpose of this hearing is for the council to obtain citizen views and to respond to questions and comments about the proposed project and other needs in the community that might be assisted with a community development block grant. Written comments are also welcome and must be received by the city recorder. Contact information below by July 7th. Both oral and written comments will be considered by the city council in deciding whether it applies. City Hall is accessible to persons with disabilities. I get to read all this, you guys. Please contact the city recorder if you will need any special accommodations to attend or participate in the meeting. More information about Oregon Community Development Block Grants, the proposed project, and records about the city's past use of Community Development Block Grant Funds is available for public review at City Hall during regular office hours. Advanced notice is requested. Special accommodations are needed, please notify the city recorder so that appropriate assistance can be provided. Required Notice Language. Permanent. Involuntary displacement of persons or businesses is not anticipated as a result from the proposed project. If displacement becomes necessary, alternatives will be examined to minimize the displacement and provide required reasonable benefits to those displaced. Any low and moderate income housing that is demolished or converted to another use will be replaced. And then, below that are some contact numbers and emails. There we go. Anything else you want to add, Haley? And then, we'll just open it for public comment? So, at this point, it's- So at this point, it's now open for public comment in regards to this specific issue at hand, our community development block grant. All right. Seeing none, I believe I can close our public hearing, correct, Forrest?
Yeah.
So I can now officially close our public hearing at 7:37 and reopen our general session at 7:37. And so in front of us, councilors, is Agenda Item Number Eight, Application for 2025 Public Works Community Development Block Grant for Water System. And there are a couple draft motions for us to consider. Or, and if there's any questions, we can do the motion and then ask questions too. So if there's any questions that you have of Haley or Forrest. I'm going to go ahead and move us along and make a motion to authorize the City of Kokil to submit a 2025 Public Works application to the Community Development Block Grant Program requesting 2.5 million funding to construct the following water system improvements. Replacement of a main line carrying water from the river to the treatment plant and improvements to the water plant and the ordering, ordering water tank. Second. I am not going to repeat my motion, what I said. Seconded by Councilor Waddington. Any other discussion or questions before we go to vote? All those in favor? Hi, great. Thank you, councilors. Thank you, Haley and Forrest. All right, this time we have in front of us Agenda Item Number 10 is where we're at now. Consider lease to the Kokil Boiler. And that's just back in front of us. There weren't any real significant changes, correct, Forrest? It was just back in front of us.
Now, Mr. Mayor, as you recall, there was some kind of back and forth about purchasing and leasing. Essentially, this lease document is one the council has seen previously. And we got some good information, we got the legal descriptions, all those things that are necessary for the council to approve this. And staff would definitely recommend that the council approve this lease.
I'll make the motion that we accept the lease agreement with the boiler as presented by staff.
All right, motion by Councilor Marshall, seconded by Councilor Westrom to approve the lease. By approving it as presented, authorizes our city manager.
Correct. I mean, that is an even status.
To sign that?
Yes, thank you.
Excellent. Any other questions or discussion? All those in favor? Hi. There we go, unanimous. Thank you, and great work on getting it painted. It's looking nice, too. Thank you. Appreciate all your hard work. All right, we're now at Agenda Item Number 11, Consider City Manager Contract. Has our city attorney on that listed as one presenting. Great.
Might as well, I'm here. So the city council's had a chance to review the proposed employment agreement under the current contract for three years of expiring. You see on the draft contract, the date of May 5th. Of course, the day of the contract would be the date that it's approved by the council. It is approved, and as previously mentioned by the mayor, inasmuch as the proposed agreement was presented with a copy of the prior agreement with strikeouts on it, it was concluded about eight days. Mr. Neuerberg has insisted that it not be given until May 5th, so it would be a form of employment agreement that should given that shows a date of May 5th, 2025, is the date to be decided.
I'll make the motion that we accept the city manager's contract as it was presented to us.
I second.
All right, motion by Councilor Marshall to accept the contract for city manager as presented, seconded by Councilor Corbus. Any other questions or discussion? All those in favor? Hi, great. Thank you, and thank you, Mr. Neuerberg, for your hard work. Thank you, Mayor and Council. All right, Agenda Item Number 12, Consider Application for Appointment to City Council. We have Mr. Patrick Flynn here. Patrick, if you want to come on up to the podium. Mr. Flynn has applied when it was open application time. So he was traveling last month, could not attend the meeting. We decided to table this till he was here in person. And in front of the councilors is the packet and your application. And so, but usually when we're in this situation, I just want to give you, Patrick, an opportunity to say whatever you want to say, address us, and then if there's any questions that councilors have as a potential team member on our council, so, yeah.
Sure. I'll just give you a little bit of background on myself. So my career has been a little interesting. I worked for Intel outside of Portland for almost 10 years in finance. And then I got tired of, of the corporate life and wanted to do something else. I looked at buying a, a business and ultimately, you know, settled on buying a Conor Ruder. About three years ago, almost three, just a little over three years ago, moved here with my family, and we've loved it, you know, ever since being in Kokil. We love the city. We love the people. It's beautiful. And, yeah, we're, we're very happy here. And so my application is just to be able to help, you know, where I can, the city, and be more active in, in its direction.
I had an opportunity to meet Patrick and his family at Stanford Heights Park. I'm trying to remember, was it remodeled then, or it was just before it was remodeled? I think anyways, well, they were newly in town. It was just a chance.
That was my first weekend.
Yeah, your first weekend.
And the family here went to the park and,
Met the mayor.
Yeah.
But it was just, it was such a great encounter, and so I still remember it and see you guys in community, and so I love that you're interested in serving your city, and certainly that you're not only a family man, but you own a business. You're already vested in this community. It's just been a privilege to have met your family and see your family grow. And so, any, any other, councilors, any questions or?
I have a comment. So on the back part, it's where it just kind of caught my eye. It says, why, why do you desire to be on the city council? And I read that over. Thank you for choosing Kokil. I'm glad to have you here. And I've had to use your business already once, but, yeah, you guys did a good job. So here it says, I come from the background of working in the tech and intel. And now with Conor Ruder, and I believe that I can help lift and support the great work that Mayor Sam has been doing to improve the city. So despite this guy's charming personality and his boyish little grins he has over there, there are going to be times where we're not going to agree with him. There are going to be times when he's going to recommend something, and we're going to sit here in silence. What I don't want is a rubber stamp. He has a great team here, and it's a team that you're asking to be on. So with that, my question is, is despite all the previous things I mentioned about him, do you feel that you could be that person that's not going to be a rubber stamp?
Oh, yeah, I'm, I'm,
I'm not done yet, and make your decisions not on his personality or what he thinks is the best, but what you think would be the best for the City of Kokil and its citizens? Can you swear to that?
Absolutely.
Well, good. Thank you.
Thank you, I think.
We'll see.
And just to clarify, what he, the seat that he's applying for was, was previously Councilor Chappelle's, which terms ends 1-1 of 2027. And so that's the vacancy that he'll be filling? I can just call for a motion at this point.
I call for the motion to accept the appointment to city council of Mr. Patrick Flynn. Sorry, Mr. Patrick Flynn, if you dare.
Right, motion by Councilor Marshall, seconded by Councilor Waddington to accept application of Patrick Flynn for vacancy in the city council. Any other discussion or questions? All those in favor? Hi, excellent, unanimous. Patrick, wait there. I get to come around and swear you in because you are now going to take your seat for the rest of the meeting. And so, and that's a big deal, so we'll take pictures and things about come around.
We got to get pictures of him hugging and kissing the babies? You.
We're going to just leave that there. I'm going to do a repeat after me, but you can, I'll make breaks. If you remember it or you can repeat. And then one of these, you'll sign afterwards. All right, go ahead and raise your right hand. I, Patrick Flynn,
I, Patrick Flynn,
Do solemnly swear,
Do solemnly swear,
That I will support the Constitution of the United States,
That I will support the Constitution of the United States,
And the state of Oregon,
And the state of Oregon,
And that I will,
And that I will,
During my continuance in office,
During my continuance in office,
Faithfully perform the duties of city councillor,
Faithfully perform the duties of city councillor,
Of the City of Kokil,
Of the City of Kokil,
To the best of my ability,
To the best of my ability,
So help me God,
So help me God.
All right, there you go. Awesome.
Awesome, yeah. I love it. I love it. All right, hold on. Oh.
You don't have your selfie stick, do you?
No, no.
You actually get to sign that one. Get these guys in the background. There you go. All right, thank you, Patrick. Come on around. Feel free to move over one, too, if you want, Patrick. You feel like the lone guy on the end there. All right, thank you. Great. Well, thank you, Councilor Flynn, for accepting the challenge. Appreciate it, and appreciate it. Okay, we're going to move on to Agenda Item Number 13, Consider Approval of Ordinance 1535, awarding Pacific Core franchise.
Thank you, Mayor, councilors, just a renewal of the Pacific Corp PP&L franchise. The current franchise expires this year, and this will extend it for another decade.
Okay, I'll make a motion to adopt ordinance number 1535. All right, motion by Councilor, or motion by Mayor Flaherty to adopt ordinance number 1535, granting an electric utility franchise and general utility agreement to Pacific Core, seconded by Councilor Corbus. Any other questions? All of those in favor say aye. Aye and opposed. Okay, good, majority. Agenda Item Number 14 now, Consider Resolution 042025, Adding a Safety Deposit Box. Straightforward. Anything you want to add on that, Director Denny?
No, I don't have anything to add.
Okay, so that was previously tabled. And so, Councilor Corbus, are you still going to recuse yourself on this item? Essentially, a First Community Credit Union, and I can go ahead and call for a motion on this. Good, motion by Mayor Flaherty to adopt Resolution Number 042025, Opening Safety Deposit Box, seconded by Councilor Westrom. Any discussion or questions? All those in favor? Aye. All right, there you go. Thank you. Moving on, number 15, Consider Application for Appointment to Planning Commission. And so we have a vacancy on our planning commission. A previous citizen in our community who's applied and is serving currently on our library board, Claire Martin, has applied for a planning commission place. And so, yeah, it's great. And so we, I don't know that we need to do an interview. We've done one before, so I mean, I'll go ahead and make the motion to appoint Claire Martin on the planning commission.
Yep, second that one.
Right, motion by Mayor Flaherty to accept Claire Martin's application and place her on the planning commission as a commissioner, seconded by Councilor Waddington. Any other questions or discussion? All those in favor? Aye. All right, there you go. Thank you.
Mayor, thank you. We appreciate everything you do.
We're all ready. We're at Agenda Item Number 16, Director Denny.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So this is a resolution about the fitness court. The city has applied for and received a $30,000 grant from the National Fitness Campaign, once again. But this time, the NFC is so encouraged by our project, they've offered to take the lead in helping us raise the rest of the money for it. You know, getting, finding, finding the grants, getting the grants, chasing that down. But what they ask us to do is to commit to the project. So the resolution, you know, simply put, asks the city to, to do three things here. First and foremost, probably the most important, is commit the land to the project. The staff thinks it's a good site. Parks Committee thinks it's a good site. NFC agrees with this. I've included the location, a map of it, down by the Riverwalk, the approximate proposed location of the fitness court. Number two, it commits the city to providing the subgrade prep and the concrete pad required to install this fitness court. I've estimated that to be about $30,000. I think that we could fund that through the Riverwalk Improvement Fund. The next year's, the '25, '26 fiscal year budget for that is about $108,000. That budget is established through an endowment we receive perpetually every year for improvements to the Riverwalk. So it's not insignificant, but we have the funding for it. We think it's a good expense for that fund. And then, third, it commits us to supporting their funding development team efforts in the grant process. And that really means, you know, pretty much me. It usually is a little more work for finance. Sometimes I need the city manager, the mayor, to, to sign an application, but commits us to helping them through that process to get the grants. Happy to answer any questions you have about the project and, and hope you consider Resolution 112025.
Do you want to explain that the endowment is,
Oh, yeah.
Can't be spent on anything else? Sorry to interrupt.
Right, yeah, yeah. So, so the endowment originally was an anonymous donor. And they made the donation through Oregon Community Foundation, who administers this, this money for them. And it was a lump sum donation, but basically we draw the dividends off of it every year. And we report back to OCF what we did with this money. We don't have to spend it every year, but they look, if we, if we're not spending it, they kind of look for a long-term plan. Big projects like this are a good way to spend that money. And I think they, it's, it's fairly loose, you know, maintenance or improvements to the Riverwalk, I think, is the definition.
Bathroom and,
Right, yeah, yeah, paid for the restroom, right, you know, paid for the re-rocking of the road down there. You know, a few things this year, yeah. What's this going to cost us? What's, what's our out-of-pocket commitment on this? So about $30,000. So, so the,
Pardon?
Uh, we would do the, probably the subgrade prep. We'd have a contractor come in and do the pad and the concrete work.
Because this is, this is saying $275,000.
Right, so.
Help me understand your numbers.
So, the, the National Fitness Campaign has a, a kind of newish funding development team who set themselves a, I think, rather aggressive timeline. I think it may push out a little bit more of, you know, October, looking at raising the rest of this funding. So, they go through largely, you know, corporate sponsors, you know, state programs. We've already brainstormed with them and gotten a good list, you know, some of the entities that have donated money around here. You know, we think, you know, Roseburg Forest Products and their, their foundation, First Community Credit Union, things like that, you know. And, and so, they take the lead in, in going after those, those funds. And if they hit the, the target and were able to raise all the funding, we build the project.
So, we're committing $30,000 whether this happens or not? Am I understanding?
Oh, no, no, no. We're, we're committing $30,000 if, if the rest of the funding is raised.
Conditional on the rest of the funding?
Right, right, yeah. I, and, you know, our money is spent after they say, okay, we've, we've got it. We're gonna, we're gonna put you on the, we're gonna build this court. You know, we're gonna get it shipped out and installed. You guys go ahead and get working on that pad. And the site is, you know, I mean, it's shovel-ready. After, there's not much grading we even have to do. We could basically get this done pending contractor availability in, you know, a matter of weeks.
And the, the Riverwalk funds can only be spent on the Riverwalk, right? So, because it's the endowment, we have this small area of land that we can spend money on, and we get about $54,000 a year. So, we're trying to make that, that's, so we couldn't go and spend it on personnel or something that wasn't on Riverwalk?
So, this is considered Riverwalk?
The match he's suggesting would come from that Riverwalk fund, which is an endowment that was given by this, and we can't use it for anything but maintenance and improvement of the Riverwalk.
And we're calling this a ma, an improvement to the Riverwalk?
Absolutely is, yes.
I just want to make sure we're clear, because there might be questions.
That's right. I'll move Resolution 11-2025 regarding the fitness court.
I'll second. Motion by Councilor Marshall to adopt Resolution 112025, a resolution to adopt and allocate funds for an outdoor fitness court as part of the 2025 National Fitness Campaign. Here's how it reads. Seconded by Mayor Flaherty. Any other questions? Discussion?
Mark, just thank you guys for doing this. I know it's been something you've been wanting to, to get down in there, and I think it's gonna be a, it's gonna be a great addition to the feel that we want down there in our Riverwalk and having a spot for families to go down and exercise together and be able to do it in a beautiful place. So, I know it's been a long time coming, and I appreciate you and Haley's, y'all, your team, your due diligence, going after grants and, and staying on top of this. So, thank you both, appreciate you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Alright. See another discussion or questions? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? I think we had all aye. Hey, great, thank you. Thanks, Director Denny, Haley. Alright, we're gonna do now, I remember 17, go to the order. Councilors, anything for go to the order? Alright, see none. I'm gonna go ahead and close our general session at 8:01 and turn it over to our URA president, President El Presidente Corbus.
Alright. We will call the URA meeting to order at 8:02. First item, the consent calendar.
I'll make a motion to accept the URA consent calendar as presented by staff.
Second.
Perfect. Motion made by Count, well, member, I guess. Member Marshall and seconded by member Waddington. Any other discussion? Alright, hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Perfect. Motion passes. Okay. Next item up, Stephanie Martel, HGE.
Hello, thank you for having me again. Stephanie Martel with HGE Architects. I'm here to discuss the Central Boulevard striping project, which was included in your URA packet. I do have some revisions based upon Mark's review of the striping plan and the cost estimate. We had a couple options, and I just wanted to present that with you, show that to you tonight as well.
Thank you. You always come with the big paper.
I like it too.
Okay. So, the first thing I think that was in your packet was this draft advertisement to bid. This would be what we're looking for approval for tonight if this all go, this discussion goes well. So, part of your council packet, you will have had a, our finalized drawings. These are sealed by the traffic engineer, Kelly Sando, and reviewed by Public Works Director Mark Dinning. He had some minor changes and accommodations that we will make when we do the bid form for that, so that we can get the best bang for our buck. That being said, we'll look at a couple different bid packages and alternates. And that's kind of broken down in this revised cost estimate that I just presented to you. And so, what you're looking at is, on the first page of this revised cost estimate, this cost estimate is based upon ODOT's 2024-25 budgeted costs. So, this is what they put out to the public, such as ourselves, to prepare cost estimates for striping. That being said, the conversations that Director Dinning has had with them looks like we could modify and they could do it at a lower cost, is what they're proposing. So, you'll see that down in the striping edition. So, the first section in striping removal in blue would be its own bid package. That would be the removal of the striping that needs to be adjusted for the proposed striping layout that we've discussed over the months. And then, the next section in gray is the striping addition. This would be all new striping that would occur. So, that being said, you know, we're looking at different options for the bike lane stencil. On this first cost estimate, you'll see, and on the drawings, we show a Chevron pattern. That is a more costly bike lane buffer. So, we went back and looked, and we can do a diagonal line, which is less costly. And so, that's proposed in the second cost estimate. And if you'll recall, the line that's, the bike lane buffer line that's closest to the travel lane, vehicular travel lane, that's going to be our new curb line, our new face of curb line in the future when this is completely built out. So, this is gonna be a somewhat temporary striping plan to get everybody used to, this is the way we travel on Central Boulevard. And then, that will be the face of curb line. And then, from that face of curb, we'll have a landscape buffer for our stormwater collection. And then, we'll have a multi-use path that's about 10 feet wide. It varies in width, from 10th Street all the way to 3rd Street. Part of this proposal is, if we look at Third, the intersection at 3rd Street, you know, we're coming up on a hill, on a hump. And so, we are a little bit concerned with adding this new stop sign that will be going there and just that vision clearance. And so, we will actually modify these drawings and have, we have a crossbar there, but we'll have a ways back. We're, we're proposing to stencil and stop ahead so that people know that there is a stop, they're approaching a stop sign. Let's see, do you have any questions right now? Councilor Wester.
Have you guys spoke to Steve Silver, the striping manager for this area?
So.
Yeah, so, the only place, I, I made sure I knew, the only place where the striping is not changing at all is the pocket lane from Fourth to Sixth. And so, I did ask him to put that on his schedule, to re-stripe that, because they're, of course, much better at 35 cents a foot.
Yeah, oh yeah, yeah, definitely.
But, you know, they don't have the wherewithal to come in here, and they don't have the time for that. You know, they come in and bang that out. You know, I don't, I barely even see them. You know, they're, and they're gone. They, they do that striping.
They move pretty quick.
Yeah.
So, if you haven't talked to Steve in the last week, there's been some very extreme changes. You might want to give him a call.
Okay, I emailed him just a little bit before his deadline. He usually gives us until July 1. And I sent, like, last week or the week before, I sent him, you know, our request, which, this year, by the way, for, for you guys, so you guys know, I mean, we have put thermoplastic down in the last couple of years downtown. And so, the only place I'm proposing is Collier and then, and then this section of Central.
I'll, I'll have a conversation with you af, after this meeting.
Okay. Alright, thanks.
Just give you some more information. The, so the, the thermoplastic for the intersections, are we, are we sticking with that Euro pattern? Because I look at maintenance after, you know, that's a lot of thermoplastic, and that stuff's very expensive. Unless they're gonna paint it, the crosswalks?
It, it, it is expensive. However, it has been, this was discussed at length during our URA, you know, presentations about using this type of a crosswalk versus just the other ones, the Continental. And the way that we, the traffic engineer has it set up, is ideally, it's where, you know, they're not, they're set up where they're staggered enough where the wheel tires will go in between two of them. So, it's not constantly running over that one crossbar in the travel lane. Obviously, the turn lanes is gonna be a little bit different.
And I did want to mention too, that I've spoken with the county. I've, I've asked HGE to break that out as an alternate bid item, the stop bars and the, and the crosswalks. I think the county, the county does share maintenance on this section of Central with us. However, you know, changing striping and, you know, that's kind of above and beyond, you know, just regular maintenance. But I think that they may be able to contribute by helping and taking the lead on the, and doing the crosswalks for us. You know, the type of thing where maybe even we could buy the materials, they could do the work, and, and we provide traffic control for them.
Yeah, well, just in my experience, not that I have a lot in it, but this design fails a lot quicker than just a single line. And like I said, for us to go out and, I don't know what the, what the warranty's gonna be, but to go back out and have to maintain those lines when they're broken in two because of traffic. So, it's a steady line is gonna hold traffic better than a broken piece. It stands true, and I understand their engineering process and their thought, but not everybody drives in the same groove pattern.
We are going down to a lane, so it, it will help, you know, instead of having a couple lanes. And, and I'm interested to see, you know, because these plans clearly don't show, you know, exactly what, right, what exactly, you know, where her spacing is and how she figured that out.
Right.
But, but I'm, I'm interested to, to see that. I, I am a big believer in the visibility of these types of crosswalks. But, you know, yeah, so I think there's, there's good arguments to be made both ways. And, and, you know, if there's still some concern, it's not even something, you know, I, you know, it's.
We could easily turn it into an alternate.
Yeah, yeah.
And see the cost difference even on that.
Yeah, just the, just the maintenance side of it. I mean, yes, it looks prettier, but yes, it's.
Well, it's not just pretty, it's for pedestrian safety, and that's the whole point of the.
Visibility.
Yeah, the visibility.
I respond to people that get hit in these all the time.
It's, it's the person behind the wheel.
And then, our city and the amount of money that we have, of course, we want our people to stay safe, but to maintain it is, the longevity of it and to maintain it is where the cost between all those lines, they're, they're gonna fall apart, I guarantee, I've seen it. And then, having to go back in and redo it, redo it, versus the more steady, the straight, our guys can buy a piece, go in and we can fix it ourselves at a lot, lot lower cost than having to come back and have a contractor do this. That's, I mean, that's my only, I mean, I, I'm looking at it as.
No, I totally understand.
As a money side and, and, and maintenance stuff that our Public Works people can go out with some, with a torch and some thermoplastic and fix those, those unsightly spots or spots that have, the delineation is, the refractive is now worn down and doesn't meet the code.
So, replacing a long bar is easier than replacing this short two-foot?
Well, these, so in my experience, these shorter ones break apart sooner.
Okay.
And so, you're out there more.
Okay.
Versus one solid, you know, they're just, the solid ones. And if you have a bad spot, you can literally go out there with a hot knife, cut it out, place a new piece in, boom, done.
Okay.
Full, you know.
We can definitely put it in as an option if that's what you'd like to see.
Just to see the, just the cost difference. I mean, if, if it's, if it's significant, then it might be something to look, work.
Absolutely.
If it's not, and it's gonna be safer and, and, and more user-friendly. I can only speak on what I've seen myself personally. And I'm just, I'm not a fan of them. You can, you can drive around, if you, if you go over to the Roseburg area and stuff where they've, where ODOT has implemented some of these, and you can see for yourself the, the breakdown and how that, how they don't, and it's expensive. Ugh.
Okay.
So, other than the, the obviously, the obvious lane revisions we've got, we are making Third and Central and Fifth. Third and Central, a four-way stop intersection. And Fifth, coming out of Umquah, a four-way. I'm still wondering how that, I'm still wondering how that stop sign's gonna be visible in front of Myrtle Vet. That corner is.
After, after our discussion, I did take a look at it. And, you know, we, we can get that up a little bit higher as well. It may help, you know, I think over most vehicles, you know, putting them up at the standard seven-foot height, you're gonna be able to see that. But, you know, I did have this discussion with HGE, and I think that, you know, with, with the new bright, new crosswalk in there and the stop bar and the stop-ahead sign down there, I think they've got it covered. Ultimately, you know, as Stephanie mentioned, that, you know, we're gonna widen those sidewalks, we're gonna put a bump out in there, that, that stop sign's gonna sit way out there. And on that note too, on that widening the sidewalks as well, you know, just, just so we're clear, I mean, that's gonna come out, we're gonna do away with the bike lane and the buffer lane. So, one of the point I'm getting to here is going with the less expensive, you know, buffer design, you know, and I kind of initiated that. I, I kind of choked a little bit on that, on that cost and wondered why that was so expensive and found out, you know, that that Chevron, it looks really neat, you know, it does make the road look nice, but if there's a, you know, good potential, you're gonna be putting a sidewalk over that within, I don't know, hopefully, guys, about five, six years, you know? I don't know.
Yeah, that's.
We're, we're gonna get aggressive on this. You know, that we go with the lower design. And the one question I would have about that is, I, I, it wasn't clear to me that this, this $43,000 still had a, some sort of design in it. But it's got, it does have a diagonal line, not the, just not the Chevron, or is it just blank? Because I would just wonder what, if we could not just leave that buffer lane, you know, blank.
I think that Kelly Sando recommended that you do have something as a buffer.
Something in there, yeah.
Because it's, it's a weird.
It is.
It's not like a bike lane that's right next to travel lane. It's, it's a weird area.
And then the stencil, the bike stencils aren't everywhere, right?
Yeah, so then, striping it, you can visually see there is a break, and bikes are supposed to go here, and vehicles are supposed to go there.
Yeah. Yeah.
So, right there next to Myrtle Vet, could we put in a, a automated, a lighted one that were, because I've seen it done before, so you'll come up onto the, on the electronic strip and it'll ignite that light and that would help take care of the.
We did that in front of the credit union and that worked all of six months.
We didn't, we didn't have a lot of luck with that. I mean, that could have just been a bad incident, but I think a, a DWI driver down there might have caught on to something and yanked that halfway up Shelley Road, I think, before they caught her.
Once, once this starts going into play and people start seeing, hey, we gotta stop.
We talked about signage for a while too, stop ahead, traffic change ahead, we can have those out for a while as well.
Oh, absolutely, that's highly recommended.
Because I know that, I turn, I turn on that quite often and that is, that is a really.
This is going to change everybody's life in this room. Myself included.
I know.
And people are not gonna like it.
No, but as we, if we'll recall, several months ago, we were here and we were talking about this and in your council session, we had public comment from two different individuals that talked about pedestrian safety, especially at that Fifth Street intersection.
And Third.
And Third.
And we had it during public comment when we had all that pre-work into the street skate project.
Yes.
We're effectively changing, we're effectively changing Highway forty-two, the old Highway forty-two to actual Central Boulevard, an inner-city street where kids and families can walk safely. So.
And make no mistake, you know, people are gonna, people hate change, right? Especially with their driving and you're gonna hear it, but for what it's worth, you know, I agree with, with HGE, with Sando Engineering, with URA, you know, in, in, you know, that, we need to change this from highway, striping in here and, you know, highway, highway setup road.
Definitely, we've been lucky we haven't had incidents yet because of how that is. I'm sure we probably have them, maybe we just all didn't know about it, but it's.
I pointed out to Paul that it may send more cars out his way down his road down there, that down Central that way.
Like that.
Yeah.
But just a testament for people that don't know ODOT, when they did the road diet outside of town here, in just a short amount of time, what triggered that was the amount of serious injuries and fatalities. People hated that. Our phones were blowing up every single day, they hated it. And I think we understand that, you know, hey, that's a continuous turn lane, you can use that, you don't have to pull out in front of the car that's coming at you at fifty mile an hour. So, eventually people do see the safety aspect of it. Our unique thing that we have to deal with is our budget issue that we have. And that's where I fear that people on, on these bigger thermoplastic stuff and, and the amount of money that's, we're just gonna throw out there, had we not had that.
Well, just to remind, to remind Council Marshall and everybody, this is gonna be a project out of our URA, separate designated funds.
But you know this as well as I do.
But will the maintenance come out of the general fund or Public Works fund?
Public Works.
Right, so I understand your comment in regards to that, absolutely.
People don't understand, they don't, they don't even do that allocated funds or anything like that. All they know is that our city's in this dire straits and we don't have this much money, but yet we're out here putting striping.
That's a good idea though, you know, I've never hit URA up for maintenance money down there. They're generous with their project money, you know, that's, that's, that's fine.
There's your new cash cow.
Yeah.
Councilor Westrom, do you have questions?
Well, the only, I was just looking at, obviously, I'm just going from Third down just following your map. So, I understand, obviously, we've got the new stop signs at Kokil Automotive and Myrtle Vet.
Yes.
And adding one at Coastal Coffee and in front of Les Schwab.
Correct, at Fifth Street.
And then at Sixth Street, those stop signs already exist, but yet there's red dots on there again. Because that's, those stop signs coming on to Central, those stop signs already exist.
Yes, correct me, I think they're in the wrong location, to be honest with you.
Well, I was just asking because the new ones are obvious, but the.
And we're not, we're not bidding those out either. I, I volunteered us to do the signs, Public Marshall.
I just didn't want people to think, oh, we're putting in a new stop sign, we're already there.
Right, yeah.
I can't remember, maybe we were replacing those stop signs for some reason, but I don't, I don't remember why those are highlighted right there, actually. No, all the existing stops at Sixth Street will remain.
Oh, and speaking of Sixth Street, the, since the fire department is here, something to think about is that little fire hydrant that's kind of hidden right down here that people park in front of all the time because you can't see it and/or there's no yellow.
The one that's covered in the brush?
There's that one and there's no yellow curb, just something, you know, if you need a can of yellow paint, I mean.
We, we're gonna have a lot of yellow paint, so tell me what you're talking about.
Well, there's a fire, there's a fire hydrant right across from Judy's New Image.
Over.
That's right where that, about where that car's parked in the, in the overhead view. There's a fire hydrant in there.
I'll write it down, they're just gonna call me anyway.
But you can't paint.
They will.
You guys can paint too, you know?
Paint project for your next Thursday night drill.
Red is for hydrants, yeah.
Volunteer hazing.
Don't be that guy.
So, I think one last thing to note, as if you recall, last time we talked about this project, right outside here where we have this existing bump out, we're proposing creating a ramp for the bike lane, so you'll ramp up onto that little walkway and then you'll ramp back down. And, and so that keeps that curb line consistent through there and then it keeps that, that fog line, bike lane line consistent all the way through.
I didn't know Public Works moved.
So, if we go back to this advertisement for bid, at the very bottom, you'll look at some recommended published dates and if you approve us to solicit bids for the project, these are the dates that they would publish. It's a public bid, so it would need to publish in a local paper as well as more statewide.
And I will go ahead and make that motion to adopt section zero-zero dot one-one-one-one three, advertisement for bid.
Any questions?
No, I'll second first.
Jay was gonna.
Actually, the motion's on the table, so.
I'll second.
Okay, now the president can ask for discussion.
All right, any further discussion?
So, we're just gonna go out for bid and it's gonna be whichever one of these two they come back, or are we picking one that we're going out for bid on, the whole project?
What I've heard tonight is that we'll have several different options and I'll work with Public Works Director Denning to come up with what those options look like so that we know when we're reviewing bids, we can accept option A, Chevron striping, or option B, you know, base bid is this, alternate bid is something else, similar to what we did in that North Adams project. So, then we can see which ones that we would like to award.
Okay. And are we going with just straight paint or are we gonna?
I have not seen the spec yet, but I, I think we're gonna go on thermoplastic, on a restripe we are.
Yeah, the paint that, now I'm drawing a blank, the one that you recommended before.
The Durastripe?
Yeah, the Durastripe, absolutely, yes. We've already, that's what's in this cost estimate is Durastripe.
Durastripe.
Correct.
Not thermoplastic.
Correct.
Right, right.
Durastripe. Thermoplastic for crosswalks.
Wow.
No, Durastripe, yeah.
Well, maybe, Dale, we put down thermoplastic on high five, but it's.
Yeah, no, we're not, we're not doing that.
That's how Steve advertises his product. He calls it thermoplastic.
Yeah.
But I don't know if your guys' machine has that capability of striping that down, but it's not, it's not the same as what we torched down, certainly.
No.
It's not as thick.
No.
But that's how, that's how he advertised it.
Right versus thermoplastic, there's a, it's quite a bit, and yeah, that, that same machine will do either or.
Okay.
Depending on what you want.
So, Council Marshall, would, would you, based upon your experience, could you do the crosswalks in that Durastripe?
I don't think so, no.
That needs to stay as thermoplastic.
Pretty sure that, yeah, that's, you wouldn't, you wouldn't, the, the Durastripe is just a, it's, it's more road friendly.
Absolutely, no, I understand that. I just was wondering, I mean, that's a, would be a huge cost savings and something that they can maintain at an easier.
No, because you're gonna, we could main, I mean, these guys could go out and maintain the thermoplastic in the crosswalks.
Okay.
If you put Durastripe down, then that's gonna have to be re-applied by the truck.
Okay.
Stephanie, just a quick question. So, is, is what you worked up here, is this what you think materials and labor are gonna be for this, or is this just materials so that three hundred and thirteen, nine eighty-six?
No, that's a.
If someone bid this out, it could be seven hundred and fifty.
That is, no, this is, would include labor.
So, you think this is what this project is gonna cost?
This is what our traffic engineer, based upon current projects that she has worked on in the state of Oregon, this is what she thinks it'll come to.
So, basically, it's all gonna be to whatever contractors think that our number, that your numbers are right?
Yes.
Okay. Good for me.
Okay, any other discussion? All right, so we have a motion made by Flaherty and seconded in by Marshall. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Perfect. Thank you so much, we appreciate your time.
Thank you, and just on another note for Streetscape project, since I think that was the agenda. We, we rejected all bids from the North Adams project so that we can work on some budgetary stuff. And so, as we move forward and we get the bids back from this, if you'll note what the date, what we're looking at, opening bids really quickly, actually, in July, and so, the end of the month, that we'll have, I propose coming back in August with that information and so then we can start that budget process.
And remind me again, what was our, what was, we were trying to get this done before fall, right? We wanna get this before the winter comes.
Yes. That's correct.
Get the new layout.
That is correct.
Okay, thank you for your time. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Stephanie.
All right, next agenda item, good to the order. Is there anything else anyone would like to add in? Okay, hearing none, go ahead and adjourn the meeting. We will close the session at eight thirty.
Great, thanks folks for joining us. Have a safe week, July.